Muscatine City Council will come to order. Greg, would you do a roll call, please?
Happy to. Councilmember spread?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Fineman?
Present.
Chahade?
Present.
Natfig?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
And Raywall?
Present.
All present, your honor?
Very good. We have four items on tonight's agenda. One, two, three, four. And we'll begin with Amy Baki, who's with the mayor's Muscatine China Initiative. How are you tonight, Amy?
I am great. How are you all?
Good.
Okay. First question I have for you, though, is how far back am I going?
Yes, I did.
I've done a lot just today.
Nice.
Let's go back six months or so.
Okay. Then I'm gonna start with March, which is not quite six months, but that's where I was actually started my notes. In March, Mayor Hopkins, Sarah Landy, and Albert Liu were invited to the China-US Sister City Conference in Washington, DC. And this Mayor Hopkins and Mary Yang from our sister city, Zhandong, were special because they were the only mayors that sat on a panel. And they had a great time as people asked them questions and stuff. So that was a really good opportunity to share our story with the rest of the country as well. Then Mary Yang came back to Muscatine and for that last weekend in March, and unveiled a photo and art exhibit from images from Zhandong, which included calligraphy, paintings, photos from the sister-city relationship that we have experienced with them over the past year in celebration of our one-year anniversary as a sister city with Zhandong in Hebei Province. In May, Sarah Landy, Albert Liu, and Tony Joseph traveled to China for the 60th anniversary of the Chinese People's Friendship Association with foreign countries. Sixteen out of all the countries were asked to tell a story about their relationship with China, and we were one of those. So Sarah told me a story today about how she got up in this huge, huge hall and was starting to tell the story when Xi Jinping came in 1985 to Muscatine and how the relationship and our story with China began. And at that time, in this huge hall, photos and all these digital images started flashing behind her. I mean, just absolutely huge, of Muscatine and all of the adventures that we have had over the last year with Zhandong and with China. And it was just ongoing, this huge digital show. So it was really dramatic. So she was able to share that relationship, and it was very impressive, okay? On this trip, they also met with the Shanghai People's Association for Friendship with Foreign Countries, who are very excited to start a relationship with Muscatine. So now we have a new city, Shanghai, which is, you know, huge, that also wants to become part of our relationships. A Shanghai delegation will arrive in Muscatine on September 28th, along with the Little Companion Art Troop. And we are in the process of putting a team together to handle this event. It will be September 29th will be a full day of events, and then this whole group will go home again on the 30th. The Shanghai folks have also hinted that they may be sending another photo exhibit to Muscatine of Shanghai, so we'll have to make room for that. Tony has met with some folks from Tangzhong, which is the city in China that experienced the large earthquake many years ago. They're eager to work with Muscatine as well, and they want to know what kind of investment opportunities there may be in Muscatine. We are discussing what to do in May of 2015 for the 30th anniversary of when Xi Jinping came to Muscatine. We would like to put a team together in place to help recreate the tour of Muscatine and invite old friends, including President Xi, the CPA FFC, which is that big group long name that I told you earlier, from Beijing, Hebei, Shanghai, and Hangzhou. In September, the mayor's committee, in conjunction with the University of Iowa, will hold its first annual Clean River Symposium in Muscatine. Our goal is to have an annual seminar with then exchanges with scientists and research students from China and eventually all over the world. So this would grow, it would be just this year. Monday, this coming Monday, high school students and MCC students will travel to the Wangzhang Polytech Campus to study abroad. They will spend four weeks there. That was an article in the paper tonight. And they have a program where they are young ambassadors from the United States and will learn Chinese culture, Chinese art. They will travel and experience some factories and learn more about China. Then that will be 11 students and two chaperones. And then eight of those students will continue with a 10-day stay in Shanghai at a youth camp. And this is an international camp where they will experience more art, and they will tour Shanghai. There's like a scavenger hunt. They will learn cooking. They have homestays. And this is the first time that we have had this opportunity for this Shanghai camp, so this should be great fun for them. In July, MCC, Don Duchet and Bob Albee will travel to our sister city, Zhandong, to their number-one high school to discuss the opportunity to become a sister school with them and organize an exchange program. Jane Yen, who is our English, the English teacher from China, who's been here this entire year since September, will be going home here in just a few weeks. And she's been a great asset to the college and to the community and to the mayor's committee with many of the things that she has done for us, including translation and advice as well. So she will be greatly missed, but we will be seeing her quite a bit as we travel back and forth to China. In the fall, we plan to look into a cultural delegation, including Pam Collins, Mary Wildermuth, and maybe Melanie Alexander, to visit Hebei Province. Mike Hartman is planning a fireman exchange with Hangzhou, and there'll be a business delegation led by Mayor Hopkins, along with Greg Jenkins, in the fall as well. We're working real hard with the people in Hebei, who all want to know what business investments there are over here and many opportunities for exchanges. But what we have to do is explain and let them know what those are. So that's a lot of work for us to come up with those things that they can become involved with. And I'm in the early stages of discussion with the camera club to take pictures of Muscatine and put together a book, as well as hopefully an exhibit that would travel to Zhandong. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay, folks, next on the agenda is TIF proposed small business program. Greg, is that you?
Yes, it is. We, as a city, have limited tools for economic development. We've got tax payment. We've got TIF. We've got enterprise funds, which is essentially tax abatement, but does allow us to access state resources. What's become apparent is that we really don't have a good program for small business. And we're working with the chamber, staff, bond council, local banks, put together a draft policy or program for your review tonight before I take it any further. And I guess I'd like to get your input tonight on a... Closer.
Do you have a copy?
Get your input tonight on the proposed outline of a small-business tax increment financing program. So, again, we're looking to incent local or existing small businesses, incent local entrepreneurs, small-business development. We're looking to incent redevelopment or infill in key areas, both land and existing structures. We want to assist in compliance with historic buildings or building code requirements. We want to incent building safety, and we want to incent fire safety. The tool that we're looking to use is a grant or a forgivable loan. Essentially, it would work similar to the CBG program that we had for housing improvements within the community. Grant dollars would be allocated from South End TIF District, proposing to start with an allocation of around $100,000. We would capture new debt from projects that are going off or being completed, or new projects that are coming on. And, again, it would be, I'll get to that here in a moment. We're looking to target key areas in the community where we need to or want to encourage infill. And we're looking at Grandview Avenue, the downtown, Second Street, and Park Avenue as three potential areas or districts to start out with. The program would be a five-year program where 20% of the loan or forgivable loan or grant would be forgiven on an annual basis. The grant amount would be up to $25,000 per project, essentially a first-come, first-served basis, based on a set of objective criteria, minimum score. And it would be a similar program to the tax payment program that we have now for the approval process, where they submit the application. If they meet the basic requirements, they are, it's placed on the consent agenda for council approval. Potential criteria that we've talked about, we develop an application scoring system, minimum investment, for example, dollar-for-dollar or two-for-one, dollar-for-dollar match or buy-in, minimum payroll. We're not recommending at this point in time. This could be a one-person shop. This could be a 10-person shop, five-person. I don't know that matters. I think the key is to fill up vacant locations in these areas. Offset historical co-compliance costs, oftentimes in the downtown, for example, will have fire-related issues where a second entrance needs to be located, or a hallway needs to be built, or an entrance needs to be redone to allow folks to increase their occupancy for these buildings in the downtown. Offset ADA access issues, offset fire sprinkler existing, or excuse me, exiting costs. We're looking at potentially bringing back a facade improvement program for the downtown and for these districts. We would have a second mortgage on the property, as we do or have done with the CBG program. We look at limiting the total project cost to be considered. You know, what equals a small business? $350,000, we're looking at at the high end. All building code requirements would have to be met, of course, to participate in the program. Looking at $15,000 towards startup cost of the business, $10,000 for sprinkler system or historical or ADA code compliance costs. Benefit would stay with the building or the site, and we would provide transfer for the, of the forgivable loan if it was sold. On the backside, we have some tentative exclusions for these districts, looking to exclude multifamily residential. I'll come back to that. Auto parts store, tire shops, used car lots, sexually-oriented businesses, tattoo parlors, pawn shops. And then down below is a list of SBA exclusions. The items in bold, we're thinking, would be pulled out of the exclusions and allowed as part of this. I'm not sure there's a reason to exclude an insurance business, for example, in the downtown or any of these districts, as long as we're meeting our goal, filling up a vacant window in the downtown, or Grandview, or wherever it might be. Let's see here. Multifamily residential. We did talk with the Economic Development Committee, and it was suggested that that may be allowed, but the benefit may go if you have a commercial on the first floor and multifamily and residential on the second floor, that that could be allowed as part of this program, as long as you had the commercial component in addition to the residential, so it wouldn't be strictly residential. That's kind of the basics of the program. And I didn't want to get too far ahead of the council before going any further. We'd obviously have to put this in proper format and bring it back. But I wanted to come tonight and get council input, see if this is something that you're interested in having further pursue and bring forward. I think we've got an opportunity in these areas. If it does well, we can look at expanding the program. If it's not doing what we think it needs to be doing, we can tweak it down the road, but this would give us a good, I guess, a good start. And those areas, Second Street, downtown area, Grandview, all are in need of some encouragement when it comes to development in those areas. So that's it in a nutshell.
Greg, what kind of timeline or timeline are you looking at starting a new TIF 2015?
It'd probably take me three to four months to bring it forward. The council said tonight to go ahead and proceed. Obviously, we'd have to put this down into proper format. We'll have to amend the urban renewal plan. We'll have to put this program together in written form and bring it back to council for approval. So it'd take me probably a good three to four months to get it done.
It certainly would be great to have Grandview Avenue filled with businesses and things of what you talked about.
Yeah, I think we want to target key areas for this project, not, we don't need to incent certain areas of the community for development, but there are areas where I think this could be of benefit.
I've had a couple downtown small-business owners mention that they think that the downtown district needs some kind of, something to give them a boost as a whole.
Yeah, Greg, anything that we can do to promote Grandview, South End area and downtown, fill up those vacant storefronts is a good idea. And more retail begets more retail, and the people who are here now will benefit from the increased traffic. It's a winner. I'm not sure what you mean by Park Avenue, but the Grandview and downtown is absolute winners.
We define those districts, we could, on a map, there's certain areas on Park Avenue that we're starting to see that same thing happening on Grandview Avenue, where businesses are taking off and not necessarily filling back in.
Also on facade improvements, there was a tremendous amount of work done on facades by Tom and Kathy Bankhead, and they have a huge file that I'm sure they would be happy to pass along to anybody who can use it.
You want to get into your exclusions list a little bit?
Happy to. What would you like to talk about?
Well, auto parts stores, tire shops.
Well, a couple things. One, we're looking at three different areas, and there seems to be an abundance of these particular types of shops, and I don't know that we need to incent those. So we're looking to incent shops other than these, perhaps. I mean, this, you know, if council wishes to modify that, we can do that, but there seem to be an overabundance of those particular stores. And then certainly, I didn't think we, same thing with used car lots, sexually-oriented businesses, tattoo parlors. There seem to be an abundance of those, and they're not, I don't know that we need to incent those types of businesses.
Okay. Anyone else?
Under your SBA exclusions, you're bold-faced, the third one down.
Yes.
That one, I, that's a...
This is, I think...
Because you're trying to give the...
I think this is where the upper-story redevelopment would fit in, as long as you had a commercial component, or you had a, and in this case, in talking with the Economic Development Committee at the chamber, we thought it might be a good idea to limit the amount of proceeds, so say, a quarter of the proceeds could be used for this type of business, so that the majority of it, we want to go to that small-business project, that small-business owner, rather than a large-scale developer.
So if a, somebody owns the entire building and rents out the apartments above, and they rent out the retail space, they would still be able to get incentive or not under this?
We would look at limiting the amount of funds that would be available for that type of project.
But not limiting them?
The business itself, the business owner would be eligible for the program. If they needed to come in and make modifications to the site for ADA or fire safety, or because it's, you know, it's an older facility or building and they needed to make modifications...
And they lease it.
This would help them offset those costs and locate in the downtown, rather than going somewhere else.
Okay.
If I may, Phil, that list comes from the SBA eligibility questionnaire, and we were just trying to use it as a starting point for the discussion. And in that world, the owner-occupied-type business has to have at least 51% of the building in use in order to qualify. That's kind of where it comes from. So we're really tweaking that to meet our needs.
Absolutely.
Okay, so in that situation, they have to have 51%?
Mm-hmm.
And what, by pulling this out of that exclusion, you're saying somebody could have from 25% to 50%?
Well, and we're not restricting it to owner-occupied. Like what Greg was saying was that we're looking at, in the situation he's talking about, it's a mixed-use building where you have both retail or commercial and residential, and the occupant of the commercial build portion would be eligible as well. So we're, you know, like I said, this was just a place to start.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
Greg, have you had any possible businesses questioning, why doesn't the city do something like this?
Well, we really haven't had a tool that fits really well with small business like this. And this will not exclude our regular TIF program from these districts. This is just a targeted program for small business.
Can be in addition to...
And we have heard that there really isn't a tool out there. We're limited by state law. I mean, we've got tax payment, TIF, and enterprise funds. I mean, that's kind of the limit of our reach, but this is a, we had an early discussion with our bond council and tossed around different concepts and ideas, and this is kind of where we settled on to bring forward, so.
Will the money used for this program be counted against our bond indebtedness?
The amount that we set aside, if that's $100,000, would count. The amount that we set aside annually would count against our bonded indebtedness. Yes.
Who were the participants in putting this together? You said...
We spoke to our bond council, Steve and I did, met with Tom, and Tom provided the SBA exclusions. I met with the Economic Development Committee, who endorsed the program coming forward, so...
Greg, on this project limit, is it, am I to understand that we would, our maximum loan would be $25,000 even on a project of $350,000, but it would still be something? Okay.
We want to try and stretch those dollars.
Yeah.
And $25,000, $100,000, those are not magic numbers. Those are numbers we've bandered about a bit. You know, it may make sense to tweak those down the road, up, down. We don't know what that magic number is to incent business.
Sure.
It seemed like a good starting point.
And you said this was based on kind of the CDBG program?
The housing rehab program?
There's $24,999. Ken, but anything, is there a limit on the CBDG project?
This isn't, this is not a CBDG.
No, I know that, but it's, but it limits to just under $25,000 that they can borrow.
For the housing rehab program?
Yeah, but they can spend more, they can do more if they...
There were several that had in the 30s that I recall.
There were some additions, like for lead-based paint abatement, those kinds of things that you could do outside of that allocation, but the rehab portion was $24,99.
And they couldn't do any more rehab than that?
No more than that.
Okay.
The owner could, I mean, if they wanted to fund...
Spend their own money, okay. That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Okay. Yeah, got it.
Anyone else counsel?
I'll move forward.
Okay. I would say so.
I would encourage you to move forward.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, a review of the Solid Waste Pilot Program. Nancy Lee.
I put together some information based on the questions from the May in-depth meeting.
Is that on?
Is this better?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I will try to talk loud. The first page is just kind of a summary of the basic operations of the refuse collection operation, and then I put some financial projections on how this automated recycling program appears to be able to be financially phased in over the next four to five years. Some of the questions that came up, though, in the May meeting were just staffing of the trucks and how many trucks. So the first part, I've listed, we've got five refuse collection vehicles now, and I put the dates, we placed those in service. The last, the newest two have the tippers on them. We have one more tipper budgeted for FY '15, and that will go on the truck we purchased in FY '06. Some of them are getting very old. They, Laura tells me that the FY '03, '04 is in the worst condition and probably needs to be replaced. Be phased out first. On the right-hand side, as far as on normal days, three of those trucks are used with two employees on each truck right now, and they pick up both residential and commercial routes. There's four or more trucks would be used on what they call double days, where they pick up two days of garbage after holidays and that type of thing, and then all five of them are used during cleanup week, as well as supplemental vehicles from public works. Some of the other equipment, they do have three one-ton trucks. One is for the curbside pickup of the bulky items, one's at the compost site, and another's used for special hauling, and then, of course, they're used also, every piece of equipment's used for cleanup week. The staffing for the direct refuse collection people, right now, we have five full-time refuse driver positions and one refuse collection lead worker. And then one of the full-time, a different full-time driver position became vacant within the last year, and we're now using a 29-hour-per-week temp person instead of that. With the automated program starting, they decided, or we decided that rather than hiring somebody and then eliminating the position, we would use temps until the automated, first automated truck is placed in service. So on normal... So on normal days, this is on the right-hand side, this daily staffing. On normal days, there's three trucks staffed with two employees. This would be five full-time employees and the 29-hour-per-week temp worker. There's one full-time refuse driver position that's assigned to the curbside pickup program and picking up yard waste. And that's every day. So that accounts for our current direct staffing. And then we use additional temp employees for the double days after holidays and then covering for full-time absences, vacation, sick leave, that type of thing. And then we hire even more temporary workers during cleanup week. I've just noted there, we do have, again, on the left-hand side, we do have other employees not directly on garbage trucks. And I've listed those positions and allocations. And that includes staffing of the compost site that's open to the general public. The next section on the left, residential customers. This is just a breakout of what we have. Regular residential, 6,861 customers, senior, 1341. The Ripley's area, this is, there's 314 individual garbage collection spots there. But there's actually one billed to the mobile court owner. And then Fruitland is billed the same way. It's billed to the City of Fruitland, but there's 334 customers or locations for residential pickup in Fruitland. So that totals up 8,850 residential customers that our refuse collection program is providing service to. On the right-hand side there, this is just a recap of the bins. We, for the trial program, we've already purchased 980 bins. There's 3,000 more bins budgeted in the FY1415 budget. And yet to be purchased to get up to that 8,850, we'd have to purchase 4,870 more bins. We've allowed another 150 just for, once it need to be replaced or get stolen or removed from residences. So that would be 9,000 total bins we're looking at. The average cost of the regular bins is $4750, including the shipping. So we have an additional about 240,000 of bins yet to be purchased after the bins that are budgeted in FY15. So that's just kind of a recap of the people serviced and equipment we're using right now. That next section after the first solid line, and this, we were looking at just the financial impact once the program is fully implemented. And it will need to be phased in so we can cash flow the purchases. But the goal is to have two automated trucks. That would be a total cost of $480,000. Those have an estimated useful life of eight years. 9,000 bins, those have an average life of 10 years. And the three tippers, we've got an average life of eight years there. So total capital cost's about $950,000. If you calculate kind of the depreciated costs, spread those costs out over the number of years of the life, it's $108,000 per year. We won't actually depreciate bins, because they're small individual items. But that cost will be spread out over the years noted. On the right-hand side, the estimated annual cost savings from implementing this program. And it will have a reduction of two full-time positions once it's fully implemented. The one full-time position has, in a way, been eliminated, but we're now using that three-quarter-time temp person. But that is one position that, once the, the temp position will be eliminated once we get the first automated truck in service. And then the other one, when we purchase the second one. So once it's fully implemented, it looks like there will be an annual cost savings of, or annual cost savings of about $133,000. So that $133,000 annual cost savings does exceed the depreciated cost of implementing, the capital cost of implementing this program by $25,000. So there are some financial benefits for this and cost savings with staffing, as well as efficiency and other benefits of the automated program. The next section, I've got the assumptions used for the financial projections that are in the next couple pages. The first one, and that was a big assumption, we're basing those projections on maintaining the current rates, not increasing rates to implement the automated refuse collection program. And the current rates are $20 per month for regular customers and 15 for senior citizens. The second assumption, we're assuming the commercial rates will remain the same and the revenue will remain the same. We're receiving about $130,000 annually in revenue from commercial customers. The last page on the attachment Laura put together, just the, kind of a general way of how commercial customers are billed. Number three, that also assumes that the City of Fruitland will remain a customer for the automated program. And there's annual revenue from the City of Fruitland for about $80,000. It assumes that we'll continue all the current services, including the curbside recycling program performed by Allied Waste currently, cleanup week, the curbside pickup of large items, and having the compost site available. Those services will remain in effect for the years of the projections. On the, I noted assumptions for increases in various costs on the second page. And then, and I've also then kind of detailed the personnel cost savings as well as the individual capital needs that we're projecting. So if you want to turn to the second page, this is basically the Fund II that we looked at during budget on the left-hand side. And then I've added preliminary projections for the next five years off to the right. The pinkish shadings at the top, those are what we just approved for the blue-white color employees, those general rate increases. So that's what I've used in the, to project future-year personnel costs. The first year is actually in the FY1415, so that's already budgeted for. The next year is 2.5, 2.75, 2.9, and 3. Those are the years of the contract. And then I just plugged in a 2.5 for that last year, FY1920. So some of those along the side, those same percentages are the assumptions. And then the other line items going down the page, we've actually built in some kind of cost increases based on the kind of things they are. So the part-time and temporary, we're only budgeting 1% a year increase there. Other salaries and wages, that's longevity, that shouldn't change. Insurance, line employee insurance, we're budgeting that a 2% increase per year. Down in commodities, operating supplies and repair and maintenance supplies, we've put in a 3% annual increase. Professional fees a 3%, and that's audit and the billing service from power and water. Technical services, this includes the transfer station tipping rate, which is not budgeted to change. But it also, that grouping of technical services includes the contracted curbside recycling, which does have a built-in increase. So we kind of average that out and increase that 1% a year. Down in communications and utilities, we put in a 2%. Repair and maintenance services, 3%. And insurance, a 3% annual increase. And those, again, I mean, they may differ from those amounts. Fuel costs may be higher or lower, repair and maintenance costs. As we get newer trucks, there may be some savings in repair and maintenance on the old trucks. But these are just general cost assumptions for the model. Down in the capital outlay section, and that's what's shaded in blue down below. So for FY16, '17, and '18, that 240,000 of costs for additional bins, we've spread that out over those first three of the future years. We put the second automated truck in FY17. And then each of the years, we've got dumpsters, replacements of $10,000 each year. Some of the other things we may need, FY18, one of the one-ton trucks may need to be replaced, so that's $30,000. In FY1819, we may need to replace one of the current regular trucks. And that would be $150,000. So that would be a lower cost than the automated. So based on those capital assumptions, that number has been moved up to the equipment line item up above, also shaded in blue. The transfers, and that's admin fees and that type of thing, 3%. So the yellow shaded totals, that would be our projected totals expenditures for each of those years. So if you want to move to the next page, which is the fund statement. And again, the actual budget on the left-hand side and the preliminary projections. And as the first assumption was, we're projecting that this could be implemented without increasing rates. So the revenues are flat for each of those five future years. The totals from the Form II on the previous page, those have been brought forward here. And then we see the kind of orangish shaded things. And that shows the fund balance at the end of each year. For the current, for the upcoming budget year, FY15, with purchasing the first new truck, we do have a relatively small fund balance, about $37,000. That's in our budget for the upcoming year. That will, is expected to increase to $141,000 by the end of '16. And then when that second vehicle is purchased, that's a very low fund balance, that $2,100, with the footnote that if there can be an interim loan or internal loan, if needed, to fund that second truck, there is enough cost savings by implementing those that it probably makes sense to go ahead and purchase it, even if it, if we would have to do an internal loan. And then the fund balance would be increasing it again to $70,000. If that regular truck is replaced in FY19, it would be about $50,000 fund balance. And the year after that, and that's pretty far out for any other capital that would be needed, but it would increase again. So it looks like, based on the assumptions in the model, that implementing this, the automated program can work financially over the next, basically FY15 and the next three years to get it pretty much implemented. Again, that's based on the assumptions in the model. But it will be, result in that overall efficiency in cost savings based on spreading the capital out over the life of the equipment. So this was intended to, and then the last page is Laura's, how the commercial rates are determined. So this was intended to answer some of the questions that came up at the last, I think it was just at the May in-depth meeting.
It was just, like, two-yard dumpsters, $49. That's for frequency of once a week, and the $54 is twice a week.
You're asking Laura questions now.
Our rates are set up based upon, we look at where we are, what kind of container the customer is recommending, asking for, how many times a week we dump it, and also the location. The $49 two-yard dumpster is usually a once-a-week dump.
The $54?
The $54, that can be a once-a-week dump, depending on the location of where it's at.
So, so like even in the six-yard dumpsters, it goes from $146 to $320?
And that goes from one, once a week. The highest one we have is picked up five days a week.
Depending on location, give me an example of, is that distance from the, I don't know.
Transfer station?
Distance from the transfer station, or...
Well, if we have to go further out, such as we do cover some area that is still within the city boundaries, but may not be right in our main route area, we have a few areas that are within the city limits that are further out, such as going out, how do I want to say? Near Highway 38 area, we handle, that would be a judgment on what kind of material it is and how long it takes for us to go out there, compared to our normal routes.
Okay.
Just recently, we accelerated the purchase of a fire truck in part because we anticipated that the cost would go up in the near term due to the federal emissions standards and federal safety standards. Should we anticipate the same issue here? Could there be some potential savings by accelerating the purchase of truck number two? I understand that we want to spread out the capital purchase issue, but, yeah.
It also spreads out the replacement dates, too. So if you had two that both had to be replaced at the same year, that could be a cost burn down the road.
I guess I don't know how significant those matters might be for a truck like this. The emission standards and safety standards, I couldn't put a dollar on it, and I don't know that you can either.
I do know that all trucks that we'll be purchasing meet the current safety standard for the industry, also air quality standard. Our last truck we purchased in 2009 had the newest, at the time period, air quality standard.
And our goal has been to work within our means and spread this out over a period of time to implement it.
I'm assuming there could be some cost avoidance by automating, I mean, as far as workman's comp claims and premiums. That's not quantified here, but that's...
Yes, those are things that are usually considered an unknown.
Yeah.
Because we don't go out every day thinking, knowing that we're going to have somebody get injured. We don't want anybody to be injured. And over time, they are finding this to be the safest way of picking up waste. You're staying out of the line of traffic. You're not having injuries to the back legs, knees. A lot of knees go out on garbage men from jumping off the back of the truck. So overall, it's going to be a large, it's really going to be a better program for the quality of life of the employees.
I seem to remember our record has been better than a lot for this, for refuse workers.
Yes, we've got a pretty good record.
Is that right?
Yes, we've got a good record right now.
But still, it's an unknown that...
Laura, I just want to make a short comment about your services. The tipper is definitely an asset. It's so much quicker and it's so much easier on your employees. And by the way, it's so much easier on the customer, too, being able to bring out something that he doesn't own, that's provided by the city for, to put their garbage in. It's large enough for most customers. It's just a fantastic situation. It's a win-win situation.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else counsel?
I will ask the unpopular question here always. I asked the...
I asked it before and I'm going to ask it again, to outsource this to a third party. Did we do any comparison, what the saving is?
Outsource the entire program?
Yes.
No, we have none.
Can we do that? I know there is benefit doing it ourselves compared to a third party doing it, but with the cost associated with it, is there, is there any cost saving if we demand that the third party will take that to the transfer station?
If we go to do this, Osama, I just want to make sure that we're doing it the way that you say, because outsourcing means all of the services we provide, just the garbage pickup.
Yes.
You say then that the other services we provide, we won't provide? Because then curbside, the cleanup week, the compost side, picking up, well, there's cost to that, so we'll have to add those costs on to the private, private cost to get a fair comparison.
But would, you are not, when it comes to cleanup week, for example, you don't use these five trucks with the tippers, do you?
When we ran cleanup week this year, it was close to a hundred thousand dollars is what it cost.
I understand.
Every truck we had was running.
What's that?
Every truck we had was running.
Yeah.
For, for the, for the refuse collection?
Yes.
I mean, for...
That's what it says in here.
All five trucks were being used.
Every truck in the fleet was being used.
Okay. But still, I, yeah, go ahead and use it. I mean, just, what would that do to, is there any cost saving? I'm just asking the question.
We're going home.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, and just so that we're sure what we're looking at, if it's just picking up trash, you know, on a weekly basis compared to what a private sector person will do. And then you guys can decide if you want to provide those other services, including keeping the transfer station open. Okay.
Nancy? I want to be clear on something on page two, please. Technical services. That, that amount is for the transfer station and the tipping fees, is that correct?
It's the transfer station tipping fee plus the payment to Allied Waste for the curbside recycling.
Now, when we, when we pick up garbage, be it residential or commercial, for cost accounting purposes, there is a tipping fee included?
Yes. The garbage trucks are weighed before they go in, they pay sixty dollars per ton for what they collect from, from the residential...
For internal cost accounting, that's sixty bucks.
And that's charged at this fund. Yeah, there's three different funds associated with solid waste, you know, the refuse collection, the transfer station, and then the landfill. But they actually end up paying each other as it goes through the system.
I have a couple of comments. Number one, Tom's question about emission standards, et cetera. I'm putting together some stuff to give to Greg shortly, and he's invited to a gathering. Anyway, long story short, we're going to be able to increase the production of methane at the treatment plant due to John, how's his name? John Cook's entrepreneurial spirit, and we're putting in a tank for grease and kitchen waste and that kind of stuff, which we will charge a handsome fee for dumping it, which will then be turned into methane. And Cummins Diesel makes trucks that, or makes engines, excuse me, that are designed to burn methane. And I talked to them today, excuse me, and those same trucks, without alteration, you can run compressed natural gas or our methane, it's the same thing. And if you have a half a tank left of methane, and we don't have any more, fill the other half of the tank up with CNG, and it works beautifully, no problem. And the cost of that is considerably less than the fuel we're purchasing. The vehicle costs more, but the operating cost is vastly reduced. And right now, we're just flaring off the methane, just throwing it away. And the affluence from trucks like that are considerably lower than any standards that are proposed.
Some is reasonable, you know, my, I don't know if you caught what I was trying to say, though, is that when we, we actually accelerated the purchase of the fire truck to contain acquisition cost, because we knew that over time, it was going to cost us more due to changes in safety standards and emission standards. And I was just speculating that there might be an opportunity to do the same here, but you're talking about deploying an entirely different technology.
Yep. Which is cost-effective if it's a truck that is used a lot.
Sure.
I'm not sure a fire truck would fall under that category. Thank God they don't run eight hours a day. I still have some unresolved concerns about, but we will have enough bins to support one of the new trucks and basically take care of half of all the residential collection in FY fourteen, correct? I'm sorry?
FY fifteen is when we're budgeting.
The first truck?
The first truck. So depending on the order, lead time, and when it's placed in service, we'll determine when that is. But we will have been close to, in FY fifteen, we would have about four thousand bins out of the total nine, so not quite half.
So that's, one truck can take care of basically half the residential pickups.
But the bins, we can, they're still used, you know, with the tippers, so the bins don't have to coincide with where the automated trucks go.
When we have the two new trucks, how many of the old trucks are contemplated being kept around? Three? I can't, I'm looking right here.
Probably, especially for cleanup week, yes. And as other ones are being maintained, you need backups to be used, you know, if one of them's down for maintenance, there has to be other trucks that can be used.
Those are pretty expensive pieces of equipment to be used for cleanup week.
But also as backup when they're, when they're being serviced.
You already own them.
Free backup trucks?
You already own them.
I'm sorry?
You already own them. We're not talking about buying new ones.
Not talking about replacing them.
Yeah, you are.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Twenty nineteen, there'd be, there's one replacement.
We maintain two trucks that are doing all the residential, and then having three trucks, which we will be replacing, to help with cleanup week?
The, what I mean, will need to be used for the commercial. You know, it's, there will always be a non-automated for commercial.
Because of the dumpster application.
Yeah.
And so to do a hundred and thirty thousand dollars' worth of commercial work, how much does one of those trucks cost that we're going to need to do it, and two guys to do it?
I think those trucks do more than just commercial when they're out, isn't it a combination of residential?
Now, now, but in the future, when the two new trucks are out doing all the residential?
As we get our new automated trucks and all the containers in place, there may be some areas that are currently in the commercial route that we put in the pilot program that may have to be picked up with the tippers. Again, we have not rerouted internally yet, because we are doing that as we get our containers and develop. We do need to have a rear loader out for commercial pickup. We also use a rear loader to dump the cardboard on-site. We would use the rear loaders for any time we have a downtime with the automated truck, because we'll have to do maintenance upkeep.
I understand the need for a spare of some kind. What does it cost to run a truck, the old-style truck and crew of two per year?
Well...
Let's see here, can we?
Yeah, we really haven't divided out the fuel costs, but the maintenance cost, it, as the trucks get older, our maintenance costs are increasing. With a newer truck, especially the rear loader, I would expect our maintenance costs would go down there. And that one...
Could you get to a point where you have three of the automated trucks and just one of the others?
That wouldn't help, we don't need three.
Then you wouldn't have, well, you wouldn't have a spare for the...
Only if you, only if you get out of the commercial business.
Yeah.
Yeah, just...
I don't think there would be any more staff savings by having three automated.
Unless that's down the road.
Because you would still have to have one each for the automated, the bulky item curbside pickup, and then two on, for the one that picks up the commercial with the dumpsters.
So we're using six FTEs today, and when we get the two new trucks in business, there'll be two FTEs there, and we're going to have four FTEs to do a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of commercial work and stand by for cleanup week?
The, no, the positions would all be, right now, we've already eliminated a full-time, but we're using that three-quarter time temp.
Right.
So that is pseudo eliminated, it's not really eliminated now, but it will be once that automated truck is placed in service.
We've eliminated, we just have two extra people.
Yeah, so one would go off, and I might have skipped that on my...
I was wrong, I was wrong. There'll be two on the new trucks, two who have been eliminated, and still two FTEs standing by and/or picking up a hundred and thirty thousand dollars' worth of...
Two FTEs that would be, with a rear loader truck, you need a driver and you need somebody to load it.
Thrower.
So no matter if it's, they're using that truck for backup, it would still need two people.
Well, Laura just said silence.
One of the people persons in the truck that's being maintained is available to work on that other truck. If one of the new trucks is being maintained, that driver...
The drivers don't maintain the vehicles, so...
Exactly. They could go work on the spare, spare truck.
Okay, sorry.
Randy?
You know, just so you know this, because we have additional services we provide, okay? So they're also out there picking up appliances that have been called in, they're out there picking up brush, they're also out there picking up yard waste. These extra people are out there picking up large items that are called in every day, so we can get a list for you on how often that happens, but it's frequent. And goes back to the question Councilmember Shahidi asked, and that is, there are a list of services we provide that these people are out there doing, not sitting around just as a backup crew. So, I mean, they are busy all the time.
I just don't understand why, with the two new trucks, why we would need three of the old-style trucks. It just, I don't get it.
And perhaps going forward, we'll, when we do the routing over, we'll figure it out, and there will be a cut, but we can't, we don't know until we rearrange the routes.
Well, it's budgeted to keep three trucks.
Yeah. And the first replacement is in two thousand and nineteen. That may be, that may be an option in two thousand and nineteen, we don't know yet.
I would just hope that with a half million dollars of investment, and being able to do the whole residential routes with two people, two FTEs, we should, I would like to realize more savings.
Under, as long as you understand that residential pickup is not limited to the stuff in the green can.
Indeed.
There's a lot of other things getting picked up, too. So then it becomes a question of level of service, and what does it take to provide it?
See, two, 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 one, two, three, so we've got five now. Okay, well, I still have those concerns.
But you're not sure what you're going to do with those residential customers that are on the commercial route right now, too, that, isn't that right? Isn't that what you said, Laura?
Can you say that again, Scott? What was that?
The commercial routes have, right now, currently have some residential customers, so it's unknown at this point how those are going to...
At this point, and most likely, we will reroute those in with the automated truck. But if we have circumstances where that rear loader with the tippers that's doing the commercial has the ability to swing right, drive right by, they're going to stop and pick them up, because we're not going to drive two trucks down that street. We already have a recycling truck and a garbage truck going down our streets.
And that's the advantage that the bin is compatible with either one.
Yes, and it's a good backup. I don't want to say, I would hate to have two trucks go down at once, but it happens, things happen. And I don't want to see us have ourselves in a situation that we can't perform services.
Well, Allied has done that, they've had truck, one of their two trucks that come down, one breaks down, and then they recycleables the next day.
Yeah.
Have you ever tried to lease a truck for a day or a week from...
We have rented a truck, we've rented a truck when we've needed to rent a truck.
Okay, there's your spare.
There is not always an availability of what we need for, when it comes to leasing or renting, we've done it, we've had to let them know ahead of time when we didn't have the extra truck. We went a whole year without an extra truck in the past, and it was very hard on our staff on double days and the cleanup week.
Greg, question. The paper you have in front of you deals with trash pickup, does not deal with the whole service that's provided by the city.
Understand.
So you're only getting part of the picture here, but it's focusing on upgrading to an automated trash program, so it does not tell you the whole picture of, and Randy started to touch on that, of the entire program that is operated through the transfer station and the landfill and garbage. Only, this only speaks to trash pickup. So those folks are doing other services within the city, this is only giving you part of the picture. Are you looking to get a better idea of what those employees, what services those employees are providing on a weekly basis?
I'm just looking for, to see how we can get more efficiency with fewer people and fewer vehicles.
Well, we're cutting two.
Two.
It may be that we can do something with routes, but I'm not sure that, well, we can't answer that today.
No, but you, is, have you, with the GIS programming and so forth, have you, can, I mean, can we take a look at what the routes may look like and maybe get it down to three days or four days rather than the five?
Certainly a tool.
I mean, it gives you an alternate day than, then for, rather than doing a double day, you just, like with the recycling trucks, they'd come down on another day.
But certainly something we can take a look at, but I don't know that we're going to have a great idea until we're actually out there doing it with the automated truck.
Unless you use the information from Allied on what...
Allied or Iowa City?
Because they're, they're doing, they're running our routes.
Iowa City is an automated combination?
I will tell you, Allied Waste and I worked on their routes, I do know their routes, I helped them put together their routes. Their routes are split in two, Week A and Week B, to make it work for five days a week. And yes, they rotate down to A, if we have a holiday, they work us Saturday, and that is an option in the future for us.
The question Osama was asking, too, I underst, garbage route, or garbage charge per residence, basically twenty dollars a week or a month, right?
Yes.
A recycling program costs us, it increased our rate by three dollars, but it's costing us somewhere right around five dollars, just a ballpark figure.
No, we raised it from eighteen twenty-five to two dollars in April two thousand and eleven, to twenty dollars in April two thousand and eleven. We reduced costs by getting rid of a full-time person back then and cut some other things out of the, that was not needed. We did, we cut a ton of overtime, ten thousand dollars in overtime.
What I'm getting at is, is the recycling program cost us four to five dollars?
No. We are charged three dollars, and I believe thirty cents a month currently with Allied Waste. We reduced rates internally to keep it to only adding a dollar seventy-five, we've had the same rate since April two thousand and eleven.
That's what, that's what I was thinking of.
Yes.
I didn't, I had the numbers wrong. But what I'm saying is, then, if you did the reci, if you did the recycling and let that, let's say, three dollars out of that twenty, and then you get the garbage collection jobbed out for another, maybe five dollars, and you still have the balance of that to do these other services, is all, is all I think Osama's looking at.
Well, what I was...
Well, it's, what, what I was referring to, if we did the, um, curbside recycling and we farm it out to a third party, and that saved the city money, and it's doing efficiently right now, it's being done efficiently. So I'm trying to take that model and transfer it to the refuse collection here, which, at the same time, I'm with you, Randy and Laura, that, hey, these people, they don't do this and go home. There's dur, during the full year, these people, they are doing A, B, and C, and D services. But if you farm only the refuse to a third party and maintain, probably have the staff to do the other services, is there any advantage or cost saving to the city? And that will eliminate some of the trucks, not all of them, to do the other services. Is there a cost saving? And I'm trying to compare here based on the success that you have with the curbside recycling.
And I do understand what you're coming at, where you're coming from.
That's, that's, I mean...
Just, and the model that you, we talked about is good, but we didn't have any, um, recycling cost to compare it with. It wasn't new. So that, that was a start. But I understand where you're coming from, and I, and it makes sense. And, I mean, when you get into it, you really get down to the nitty-gritty, you just paid off a ten million dollar transfer station. So you're gonna privatize the whole thing, what are you gonna do with the building? What are you gonna do with Hazard's Waste? What are you gonna do with compost side, the tires and all those other things?
That's, that's nothing to do with the landfill or transfer station. It's you are farming out just one single job.
It is, and I...
That's, that's all what I am after here, I mean...
And just refuse collection.
Yes. And, and based on, if that curbside recycling was beneficial and it's cost-saving for the city, probably by now, we'd have done it ourselves. But it's, it's cost-saving for the city, and that's why we went third-party. And we compare that to the refuse collection. That's, that's my point.
You're right.
But nothing to do with the transfer station itself or the landfill. This is completely different subject. And I'm not trying to eliminate, uh, personnel or anything like that. What I'm trying to do, it's like, for these five trucks, and I know in two thousand and nineteen, you're going to purchase another one and maintain all these, probably you can, uh, decrease that size of the fleet to have probably by doing that.
I follow you, Osama. I know what you're looking for. And I'm gonna go back to what Phil had said on, one of the things that we're going to be doing, and you and Scott and I, you had heard of this the other day, but we're looking at a GPS tracking, uh, device on our vehicles. And right now, we're gonna be entering into a pilot program to see how well that works. And in fact, we're getting material right now, uh, to equip ten vehicles. And three of them, uh, are on, um, garbage trucks. And one of the things that we'll be able to look at is our routes. And is there a way to improve our efficiency based on the tracking of those vehicles on that? Which gets back to what you were asking, Phil. So the answer to that is, yeah. You know, we will continue to do whatever we can to make this a lean operation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments, Council, on this particular topic?
I'll just second Osama's questions, and we're, I think we're all on the same page now.
Okay. Let's move on to, uh, the last item, that's the Mississippi Drive Corridor presentation. That begins with Greg.
Great. Um, while Randy's making his way up, just a quick intro. Uh, as you know, uh, I guess what we wanted to do tonight is start planning to utilize the transfers, transfer of jurisdiction funds. We got notice this past week that the city, uh, or that IDOT approved the transfer of jurisdiction. Uh, the city will have thirteen million dollars, uh, as of October first, uh, this fiscal, uh, this coming fiscal year. Uh, we wanted to talk about priority number one for those funds, Mississippi Drive Corridor. Priority number two, Grandview Avenue. And three, how we can leverage, uh, any remaining funds. Now, there may be limited remaining funds if we have to upfront the cost, uh, for, uh, utilities on the Mississippi Drive Corridor. Obviously, that'll, that's yet to be, uh, discussed, and although they are aware that that's coming forward. But, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Randy.
Okay. There I am again.
Hi, Randy.
Hi. Good to see y'all tonight. This one, Greg asked Steve and I to, um, review the Mississippi Drive Corridor project and come back with, um, kind of a report. And, uh, I believe you have that in front of you, or had a chance to see it, and, um, and so we did that. But just to, you know, kind of refresh people's memories and for those at home, this all started back around fifteen, twenty years ago. And I think, at least as long as I've been here, it's always been accepted, recognized that the riverfront is probably the most valuable asset that the citizens of Muscatine own. And, well, about twenty years ago, um, all of a sudden, parts of it started getting chopped up. Uh, one person wanted to do this with it, another person wanted to do that with it. And so city staff decided that what we better do is get in front of this whole thing, get a plan put together on how to use that riverfront in the future. So in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, Mayor Dick O'Brien, uh, three members of the city council, the co-chairs of the CIA T group, two representatives from IDOT, individual from the Greater Downtown Muscatine Association, two individuals from HNI, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and representatives from city staff met to discuss, um, how this whole thing should move forward. Uh, and since that time, uh, significant changes have occurred on the riverfront, in part related to individual projects. If you'll recall, the Pearl City Station renovation is one. But in particular, due to Pearl One and Pearl Two, where a lot of work was done on the riverfront as a result of those projects. And this was an outgrowth of, of putting together a comprehensive plan for the use of the riverfront. Also, in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the city, uh, engaged the services of RDG Planning and Design and Stanley Consultants to prepare a preliminary design for Mississippi Drive, which has now been labeled the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. The study was funded through a surface transportation grant. And after much, um, data collection, public input from five charrettes, and Steve likes me to say charrettes, so five charrettes, which are public meetings, um, we had presented to the city council, uh, this study, uh, in April of two thousand and seven. Once we had the, uh, preliminary plan in hand, the next phase of this was formidable. And we faced two challenges. One is the requirement for an environmental clearance study or an environmental impact statement. Um, and the other is to secure the, uh, substantial amount of money that was gonna be required, that will be required, to move the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project from a concept to an actual brick-and-mortar undertaking. This past winter, one of those challenges was removed via the negotiated settlement with IDOT by transferring the portion of US sixty-one, uh, to the city's jurisdiction for thirteen million dollars, as Greg just acknowledged. So after nearly ten years of discussion and planning, we now have an opportunity to create a strategic plan for moving forward with major scheduled public improvements. The strategic plan addresses quality of life, financial responsibility, economic development, and the marketing of Muscatine through a well-planned and well-coordinated comprehensive undertaking that includes and involves Pearl Three, the Iowa Reinvestment District, featuring the River View Suite Development, and the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. The other challenge, the environmental clearance, is also nearing an end. Steve has been a part of this entire Mississippi Drive Corridor Project from its beginning. And he will update the progress of the, uh, environmental impact statement as well as the next, um, step in this whole process. Steve?
As we have reported to Council in the past, we have been, what appears to be mired down in the efforts to get through the environmental process and preliminary design. That was a contract we had with Stanley Consultants in, executed two thousand and ten. We are now well on our way to another year of trying to get there. We are getting closer. It's not like this is sitting on the shelf, but the funds that are being applied to this effort are federal highway dollars, and we have to follow federal procedures for, uh, how we move forward. Given the fact that we're an older riverside community, we have history and industry background, cultural resources, and other things that are of great interest to many folks, and we have to be sensitive to those as we move forward. So the effort that we're undertaking now is a very slow, deliberate analysis of all of those cultural, archaeological, and historical, um, uh, assets that we have in the community. And to determine a way to move the project forward, we will have to have a formal EIS prepared, what they call a four F, and a section one oh six. Those are federal responsibilities. We have to go through the state to do that. So we've been working with the Department of State Historic Preservation Office, Iowa DOT, the Cultural Resources Office, Land Management. There's been a number of different agencies we're working with. And we are nearing completion that I think will culminate, hopefully, um, within the next month. Uh, we would like to bring back to the city council what is referred to as an MOA, which is a memorandum of agreement between the city and the state and our federal partners how we'll proceed with this project, assuming that federal dollars are used on the project. So keep that in mind. We use federal dollars, we have to adhere to these standards. And we're getting into things like vibration monitoring, uh, by removing the paving sections, what negative effect would that have on adjacent cultural or historical resources, and how you do that. Um, so there are a number of technical issues that we have to work our way through. We had about a thousand artifacts curated as a part of this process. It's, 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 it's been a challenge. Um, but as I said, we are nearing completion. We are going to have to spell out those areas in a memorandum of agreement that we can, we can have council approve, and then it goes to DOT. DOT has to concur with it at the SHPO level, State Historic Preservation Office, and the Department of Transportation level, and then it goes to federal highway. They have one chance to review this, then it comes back for a series of public hearings before the documents are actually executed now. That's a lot closer than what you might think, because I've been doing this for so long that I can see the light at the end of the tunnel here. That's if we want to use federal dollars. But remember, when we entered into the contract, we agreed to use the funds that are available to complete our environmental, our environmental reviews and obtain clearances, necessary clearances, and to complete preliminary design. I think we have an obligation as a part, contractual obligation with federal highway and with our contract with Stanley's to see that through. The other thing it does that I don't want you to lose sight of is when we have completed this, we have our memorandum of agreement. There'll be specific things we will have to do as we move forward only if we use federal funds in any part to do that. Okay? Any part of the project. We don't have any federal funds that are directed currently to that project, but we don't want to close that door. It may be possible that there will be, and the funds would be sufficient enough to allow us or permit us to move forward with these undertakings, um, and the obligations we'd have through the memorandum of, of agreement. On the flip side of that is the thing Randy just touched on, and that's the transfer of jurisdiction. We have told you before, and I, I think we all stand by that, there are those strings tied to that. It's considered local funds once the transfer is accor, is secured, and the council can spend that however they want. Um, those would not necessarily, they would not necessarily require you to adhere to all the federal standards that I just discussed with vibration monitoring and the other things. But you could not seek any federal funds for that if you go that route. So you'll have both. You'll have, hopefully, when we're done with this, we'll have all our federal approvals necessary to move the project forward, and the council can make a informed decision whether they want to secure federal funds, and I'll touch on that in just a minute again. Or we can look at the other alternative, which is using the funds that are, will be transferred, uh, through the transfer of jurisdiction with the highway. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Randy for a minute.
As we move forward with this, and we start talking about the actual construction and the changes, it's, uh, much too early and difficult to divine exactly the specifics, uh, of the cost and the design. We do know this much. Uh, the design will incorporate flood protection, pedestrian safety. We really want a retaining wall along the railroad corridor roughly between Ash to Pine Streets. Have the complete street concept. Like to see Muscatine Power and Water's transmission lines buried. Uh, old utility infrastructure, water sewer. Uh, I know a little about, I guess, gas and, uh, uh, communication out there also. Should be replaced in sidewalks. And, um, so that much we do know. There are a lot of other elements of this project that we will have to talk about with the council, take a look at the costs, see about our partners, where we're going with it, before a final design is done. But those seven categories, uh, will definitely be addressed. Steve and I have recommended what, probably many would be considered a, an aggressive timeline for this project. This year, we would like to see, uh, the completion of the environmental clearance study Steve just talked about, and also the, uh, to begin property acquisition and demolition. In two thousand and fifteen, I'd like to select an engineering firm for the final design, and the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, uh, bidding and construction. And like I said, that's aggressive, but unless you set yourself a timetable, then you'll tread water. Uh, this project's not just about construction, though, or reconstruction. We need to identify additional funding sources. Now, again, these are just our recommendations. And I'm not sure Greg totally agrees with this, council may not either. For that thirteen million, we would start off by saying only half goes into this Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. In our minds, you reserve the other half to go down Grandview. And you leverage, you use that six and a half million to leverage additional funding. And there are other funding sources out there. Now, we need to partner with multiple stakeholders. We know, for instance, HNI is, uh, looking at redoing their campus area, and what impact that would have on this particular, uh, project. And we need to advance economic development opportunities wherever we can. We acquire and demolish the, um, what's called in the Carver Corner, um, the old Leach Limber Site. Uh, that's pretty developable property. And certainly would set itself up nice for our economic development in the future. So all of this are very much a part of the strategic plan from our point of view, and it's just not the construction itself. So Steve, you wanna wrap it up, then?
I'm gonna quickly touch on maybe some of the funding options, just so you get it in. There, there are so many elements to this corridor, different elements that affect, uh, a broad spectrum of the community that, you know, we can reach out to a number of potential funding sources. And I just wanted to give you an idea where some of those might be. To leverage these dollars, if you're interested in pursuing them, and at the local level, obviously, you have the transfer of jurisdiction funds. You also have bonds, you have your bonded indebtedness. You have TIF financing that you can make available to it. There may be some benefit to the reinvestment district if and when that's approved when we move forward. That's the one that you'll recall, the Pearlview Corridor, River View Suites are gonna be using. Um, we have sewer separation funds that we could use, because we're gonna be doing sewer work in that corridor down there. They're eligible to use for that part of it. And utility, our relationship with utilities to get them to participate in this at the local level. On the, on the state, uh, level, well, there... On the state level, well, to broaden that out past the public sector, you have the possibility to use, I'm going to use a term just for the sake of using it, Pearl 3, another similar pearl project where you do a number of projects under an umbrella, one larger one, and you go out and seek funding for that. Donor opportunities, maybe some of the smaller elements that are a part of the corridor project. Wayfinding opportunities, landscaping, benching, those kinds of things. A lot of times donor... Those are donor opportunities you can seek. Civic groups, athletic clubs, charitable trusts that are in the community, local industry and local businesses. And again, at the federal level, you're looking at potential floors for Federal Highway, Department of Transportation at the federal level, excuse me. Region 9, which is a technical area for bi-state transportation system, for surface transportation funding. Funding cycle they call IST, which is a safety funding. Scenic byways, community development block grants. Iowa Economic Department, IEDA is another funding source. So there is a number of opportunities out there. I think we want to maximize, encourage us to maximize those limited funds that we have available and leverage what we can to help us pay, to make the project as successful as we can and be able to remain... And have remaining funds to dedicate to the Grandview Avenue Corridor Project as we move along. So wanted to touch on those.
I guess just to conclude this, if you have a chance to take a look at your counsel, long-term goals and counsel and management agendas for 2014, '15, you will see that this strategic plan that incorporates Pearl 3, the reinvestment, Mississippi Drive, hits on an awful lot of the objectives that you have listed in here. We see this as a project whose time has come. And we're looking forward to, at least for the very near future for some people and the not-so-distant future for others, to help you move it forward. Do you have any questions?
Randy, I wasn't aware of that arch that's a problem with the railroad. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, well, you know, Steve and I met with the railroad. And we... We told them about these things, you know? And I think the best thing at this point, Scott, is we get down there and we document it as best as we can so that when something happens, we can say, "We told you so." You know? And you would hope that they would take it serious. And, you know, nothing may happen for 200 years, you know? It might fall in tomorrow. I don't expect that. But I think that the other thing that we... At least found somewhat interesting is we talked with them about that retaining wall down there. And how, right now, this day right now, before transfer jurisdiction, that either belongs to the state of Iowa or it belongs to the railroad. It does not belong to the city of Muscatine. And we would like to see that wall get shored up because it impacts Mississippi Drive. And you can see it now a little bit. And so we brought that to their attention. And I don't know if they were trying to humor us about, well... So what do you want us to do? And I said, "Well, we want you to come up with a million bucks to help us with that." And they didn't say they'd write us a check tomorrow, but they didn't say no either. So that's one of those funding opportunities that we need to pursue. So there you go. Anything else, counsel?
This counsel... This document gives you a rough timetable for moving forward. It also... I don't know. I think we think it's critical that we maintain these $13 million for Mississippi Drive Corridor, for Grandview, and leverage additional dollars and make sure that... There's a lot of hands out there that we reserve these dollars for those three pieces of puzzle here. This gives you a rough timetable when you'll start to see things moving forward. I encourage you to take a look at it if you have questions. Feel free to send them our way. Anything else?
I think these gentlemen are to be commended for fighting the good fight ad infinitum with, what, 15 different agencies and...
Okay, it's time for counsel comments. Counsel comments, beginning with counsel.
Nothing, thank you.
This corridor project's been going on for a long time, as we mentioned. When you mentioned the arch, I was thinking of the arch that they were talking about putting over Iowa Avenue.
Well, this one's an underground one.
Yeah, I know. So anyway, nothing else, your honor?
I have nothing, thank you.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Jeanette?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Greg?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Then I have nothing. Does everyone? To adjourn. You can use adjourn.